June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, we're a little bit after nine AM. I would now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from the honorable city council member, Mr. Brad Childs.
Father, Grant Mayor Spears and this council, the ears to listen to the people we serve and the wisdom to act on their behalf. Father, I ask that you bring this council together as allies and that we lift each other up with the unique talents that you have blessed upon each member. God, bring us all together as a family. Let us work together with understanding and compassion towards the goals and dreams you place in our minds and on our hearts. Let us hold each other's dreams. Let us hold high each dream you challenge us with, so your blessing does not pass us by. Thank you for this meeting today and the freedoms that you have blessed us with. Bless our agenda to be productive for the common good of the city, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Childs, that was a good prayer, brother. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, on item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the first name that I have on my list is Mr. Regis Guillory. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Spears. My name is Regis Guillory. My address is eleven forty-five Brandywine Street, Beaumont, Texas. Over here on behalf of Crew Deonics, who will be sponsoring the Juneteenth celebration this weekend at the Orange Boat Pavilion. So we want to invite everyone, particularly the council. So we do have VIP parking passes for them.
VIP, baby.
As well as I have parking passes for the department heads, and I will give those to Jay Treyhand for his distribution. We will, the event will be happening this Friday, this Saturday, and Sunday from eleven AM to eleven PM. It will be highlighted by vendors. We have everything from Kona ice to healthy smoothies, to from hamburgers to chicken legs. So we'll also have entertainment highlighted on Friday, I'm sorry, on Saturday evening by Chris Ardwan, and then on Sunday, our highlight performer will be Little Nate. We also have a number of children activities, such as face painting, balloons. We have obstacle courses, blowups, as well as a petting zoo. So we want to encourage everyone to come out and support Juneteenth, which, as everyone knows, is the first time it will be celebrated as a federal holiday this Monday. So we invite you all to come out and join with us in celebration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guillory. And also, before he sits down, I want to say thank you, Mr. Guillory and Crew Deonics, for doing this. This is major for us and this community. But I also want to thank Mr. Guillory because Mr. Guillory took part in helping us pick our fire chief, Mr. Bilbo. So thank you, Mr. Guillory, for being a part of that team. We honor you and thank you, sir. Okay? On next, on our list, we have Mr. Alan Mesker. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Good morning.
My name is Alan Mesker. I live at seven oh four Tenth Street in Orange. I'm here concerning solar panels in the historic district. We are concerned about the placement of them and what value it may affect on our values of our homes in the historic district. As far as I know, there isn't any ordinances or limitations on it at this time, but we would like to make sure something is done to protect the values of the historic district. I don't know what city council can come up with some ideas and some ordinances or limitations on them. I know we've looked at some places where they weren't on the roof, but they were on platforms behind the homes where they could gather the sunlight. So that was an option. So I'm really concerned about if they're on the roofs during hurricane. I know my roof was forty-one thousand dollars to replace. If I had it on my roof, solar panels, would that rip them off and the insurance costs increase to protect the property is a big concern for everybody. So I'd see what the city council can come up with and see what we can do about the historic district homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Okay, that is all the names that I have at this time. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, if not, we will move on to city announcements. Mr. Coons? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dallas?
We got two today.
All right.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Just to reiterate again what Mr. Guillory and Mayor Spears has touched on, Crew Deonics is having the Juneteenth Festival. The City of Orange is playing a supportive role in that, and we are so grateful that they've decided to put so much time and effort into this festival. I love when, you know, we get to catch up with them and they tell us all the things that they have added and continue to add, and they've even told us ideas that they've got next year, and we're like, oh, my gosh. So we're very excited about that. They're very excited, and we hope everybody goes out to support that. And I did want to have this save the date for Fourth of July. Excuse me, it will happen on July fourth, and we will have a concert by Logan Swallow and then the fireworks following.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'd like to introduce John Meek, our sewer water manager. He comes to us from Newton, thirteen years of experience, ten years of that is as sewer water manager. We're a little bigger than Newton, of course, but he's handling the job pretty good so far. About three weeks in.
All right, thank you, sir. Welcome to the team.
Welcome.
Okay. All right, thank you for the announcements. Onto item six, consent agenda. May tenth, two thousand twenty-two, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, special calls city council meeting minutes. May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, regular city council meeting minutes. And May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, special calls city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Burge, a second from Mr. Childs. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Onto item seven, presentation. Presentation by Don LaBeach of the LaBeach Architectural Group regarding possible renovations to Old City Hall. Okay?
Mayor and council, as y'all recall, while Jay's going to pass those out for y'all, which is just copy of the presentation, I'm gonna let Don LaBeach speak here in a minute. But if you recall, a few months ago, y'all authorized us reaching out to Don LaBeach and kind of give us some ideas to include cost estimates, what it would be to remodel, renovate the old city hall with the idea of converting it into a visitor center and a multi-use museum. Multi-use museum being kind of like having multiple small museums in there, if you will. So with that, Mr. Don's here to talk to us about a couple of options, so. And also Jim's here. If he's got any, you got any comments first, Jim, before Don gets up there?
Good morning. We're very pleased to have Don LaBeach working on this project with us. Don has a tremendous background in this type of renovation, old municipal-type structures that he's renovated, particularly in the Galveston area that I'm familiar with. So he's very thorough. We showed, we gave Don a guided tour through the facility several times now, and he's made a very detailed estimate of what it's going to take to renovate the project. So I'll introduce Mr. Don LaBeach.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate the opportunity to come before council. In my opinion, this is an exciting project. It's an opportunity for economic development for downtown. Some of you may have remembered me from the project we just finished for Lamar right here, right across the street, basically. And it's been nice to be part of the sort of the rebirth of downtown, some new projects. So with that, of course, this is the building. We're talking about a renovation of the ground floor with a probable cost around a half million dollars. Some general things that we're planning on the first floor for the outside is to create a new handicapped entrance with a ADA accessible ramp. We have a ramp on the backside of the building right now, but it does not meet the ADA requirements. It's very steep. So that ramp would be located in the carport area that's on the ground floor over on the side, so the whole ramp. The idea is to keep it inside of that area so it doesn't affect the look of the exterior of the building and that we can keep that beautiful historic front to it. There are some things we need to do. We probably need to take those two big trees right next to the building out. Then I don't see any major things happening with them right now, but sooner or later they will. So we're talking about exterior paint job on the exterior, but not replacing any of the doors or windows yet. Those are very expensive to either work on or replace. So that is not in our project yet. There is some concern by city staff about the sewer lines coming into this building. I think we'd look at that as an alternate in this project of replacing the sewer line into the building while we can get under that carport, because I think that's about where it comes in, while we're doing the work in that area. Our next slide just basically shows you the existing floor plan with the walls that we were planning on removing out of there. And I'll try and see if this, unfortunately, this laser didn't work on the screen, but we're creating basically an area for five different galleries. So the entrance to the building would be through the front doors, handicap entrance through the side doors in the carport area, through a vestibule. So we're creating that vestibule there so that the museum could be locked and the city can still use the offices upstairs, because there are several up there, and I can see how it could be subdivided. You may need room for expansion of one of the departments or something, so it gives us that flexibility upstairs, so the upstairs can be open and the museum can be closed and vice versa. So it gives us our security that we need there. The green area is basically the area that we plan on renovating. The blue areas are support areas, IT areas, areas where the city has components that we don't want disturbed. But there again, the idea is you come in the front door. Right now, if you, you all are familiar with the building, I'm sure, there is a restroom on the left-hand side. We would take that restroom completely out, so when you walked in the front, we're back to the old lobby space before you added the restroom. And then there's a room on the left with a beautiful fireplace, so we would block off the entrance to the vestibule to get to the second floor, and we would open it from the gallery area, so that gives us another gallery area. Thus, the old safe, I think, can be another very interesting gallery area. In fact, we could keep things that are very valuable in there, and they could actually be locked up at night, because we have the vault doors still in place. As you go around to the right, there was the windows where you could go up and talk to people there. Plan on taking that wall out. There's one column that we believe, they'd give us a long rectangular gallery there. Just behind that gallery, there's an old restroom. It's not handicapped accessible, so we would take out that restroom, and we could build one that's handicapped accessible. We would have behind that, in the upper right-hand corner, would be an office for museum staff. And to the left of it would be a curator area, so it'd be area they could bring things in, work on them, reframe them, remat them, clean them, all of those things. And then we'd still maintain the ramp on the back of the building, in the back entry door for staff to come in and out of the building. So that is basically our plan on the ground floor. Now, I won't bother you with all of these things, they're there for you. These are estimates on a room-by-room basis that tells you exactly what we have planned to do in each of the rooms in the building. But what I will call your attention to, sorry, very last one, two very important things. We've got a half-million-dollar budget, but I've got a forty-four-thousand-dollar contingency built in there. And those of you that have dealt with old buildings know, there's no limit to the surprises we find when we start opening up old buildings. So we want to make sure that we have some money in our budget so that we can complete this project. Things that would be outside of the scope for the museum would be any kind of displays for the museum, any kind of specialty lighting. And, you know, during the design process, we might get an idea of exactly what wants to be displayed and how it is to be displayed, so we can pick up some of that lighting. But museum lighting could get pretty expensive sometime. So our idea with this is that we take care of the general lighting in the project and then the specialty lighting we'd have to look at, along with any display areas, those kind of things that the museum itself might be. But it would make a beautiful place, very easy to use, open galleries there, opportunities for people in the community, like schools, to display things. They're also, I think it's a great addition for downtown Orange. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is aren't the funds allowed for the main electrical service in this building? Because I'm sure you noticed it was dated.
Yes, sir. You'll notice in my estimates that we're planning on, the areas that we're going to renovate, we're planning on doing away with all the electrical in there and totally rewiring all the ground floor.
All the way out to the main electrical service?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
How many restrooms, you said?
We'll have, we'll have the one handicap restroom on the ground floor. Yes, ma'am. There are some restrooms on the upper floors that are there right now, but this proposal doesn't address anything on the second floor.
Will the restrooms upstairs be accessible for people to use, or just the one on the ground floor?
Just the one on the ground floor that's open to that gallery.
Okay.
You know, it's around the side and open to the gallery, and the staff would have to use that restroom also.
And if I may, you know, when we first started this little discussion with Mr. LaBeach, we said, how much would it cost to get this whole building up into a manner that we'd all be proud of? As I recall, his estimate then was one point three million dollars.
Yes.
So we're kind of like, what's some other options? You know, that's a, that's a big number, and that's where he kind of took another look at it for this half a million. Again, it still would not be, you know, there'd still be things that would not be updated or remodeled.
Right.
And again, after this presentation, we go into the next agenda item where we can talk more about if this is something we want to do or not. But this, this presentation, I just want to give him the opportunity to say, here's what I got for about a half a million dollars.
But the things that we're going to be doing are very nice. Not the Cadillac, but they're a very nice Chevrolet, if that makes any sense to you. When we do a restroom, it's going to be a tile restroom, and it's something that you can take care of, and it'll last. The rest of, the rest of the area can be pretty simple, you know. White, everybody loves white walls in a museum, so that's pretty simple. The flooring will put probably not carpet, but probably like a vinyl-type flooring in there, so it's easy to clean.
Right.
And it looks good. You know, that wood look with the white walls is always a very nice museum look. So it's, it's going to be nice.
Definitely want it nice, and but also keeping the character of that building, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, and not, that's.
It's a beautiful building.
That's so important, not to change the look of this building.
That's right.
That's why it was so important to me for us to figure out how to get that ramp in and kind of hide it, so it's not, it doesn't become your focal point when you walk up to the front of the building.
Right.
Thank you for, yes, thank you so much. It's so exciting, you know, for us to think of that building. Going to be great like that again. It will be really nice.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you, Mr. LaBeach, and to thank you for giving us a vision, because I know I'm not an architect, so I can't look at buildings like that and see it. However, I like how you said you had the contingency. My wife and I used to watch the A and E channel where all the house renovations, and every house, something would go wrong, and they'd be like, now we need twenty grand more. So that's very smart, very smart. And thank you to city staff for working with Mr. LaBeach to make this happen, because it's something that we've been talking about, that we've been wanting to see come to fruition. And then, most importantly, we're keeping our promise to not sell the building. We're looking for other ways to utilize it. So thank you. Okay? All right, so we will move on from the presentation with no action to be taken and move to item eight A, discussion and possible action regarding the renovations to the Old City Hall. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, council, again, we heard the presentation, and so again, kind of like I said a minute ago, we're kind of looking for some guidance, if this is something y'all want to pursue. And again, you know, originally, when Mr. Don came up to us, you know, he said, the whole thing, because, you know, we want to shoot for the moon, the whole thing. What do you think? He was like, one point three. Now, again, he didn't say that quickly. He studied it and has all those good numbers for us. But anyway, you know, where we kind of said, well, what's something, what could be a less costly step? And here's that half a million dollars one. We would like to go ahead and cut down those two trees that are in front. As I understand, those are not original. Those were planted a few years back. Kind of looking at Jim for some help on those two trees in front of the Old City Hall.
They've been there nobody years.
But not, not, not like since nineteen forty or something like that.
No, it's.
Okay. So but anyway, concerned about the long term, what that may damage that building. But anyway, just kind of see if this is something y'all want to pursue. Again, under discussion with legal counsel, and again, where I say, if we use this, this building, and being sincere about a visitor center and then a museum with multiple galleries, appreciate that term, this could be used hotel occupancy tax. This is a legal expenditure to expend those funds, so.
I think I'm ready to say, I'm ready to pursue it.
Yeah, I'm ready. It opens up an avenue, a door, to other things that could possibly occur here in Orange. I mean, I'm aware of additional things, fundings, that could possibly come due to having something like that and drawing in so many people to come to the City of Orange, just to see that. So I'm all for that.
So we have Mr. Burge?
Yes.
Ms. Henigan?
Love it.
It's great. I'm all in.
Okay, Mr. Childs, any comments? Mr. Bailey, any comments?
I think we could use this in stages, do this bottom floor part, then we worry about upstairs.
Absolutely. I agree.
But I think we'd get out there as quickly as we can.
Absolutely.
Sounds great. Sounds like we have a winner.
I also, could I, could I just add this? I know we said a visitor, visitor, the museum, but there's the area in the back, it could even get to the place where there's a little deli or some type of little thing where people are, you know, visiting the museums in the area. We can have something like that.
Was that the old jail at one time in the back?
Yes, and that too. I took a tour of it, and that would be amazing for young people or just people to see that, you know, to see what that jail was like so many years ago. The carvings on the, on the walls and.
Not guilty.
I will say, everything we've talked about today, though, does not include that back building that used to be the CVB.
Oh, it doesn't include the back of it.
Nothing.
So that would be.
Only that ground floor.
So that would be something additional, like a different thing we have to talk to you about? Okay. Stages. I got you. That's fine, I'm fine with that.
Sounds good. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion from Mr. Burge, a second from Mr. Childs and Mr. Bailey? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Coons. Thank you, Mr. LaBeach and city staff. We appreciate you. Okay, onto item eight B, discussing impossible action for potential future use of hotel occupancy tax funds that will enhance and promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry in the city. Mr. Coons?
I figure since y'all are spending hotel occupancy tax, I'm going to get y'all spend some more. But seriously, though, you know, as you know, we're accepting applications for hotel occupancy tax fund grants, but with that in mind, we do think there are some eligible projects that would complement some of the things that we have done in the past towards certain things that bring visitors to our area, that would promote and enhance tourism and the convention and hotel industry for the City of Orange. Some of those additional enhancements would include out at Riverside Pavilion, that's where we're kind of concentrating on, is to improve the drainage. There's a little, if you will, a little swell around. We'd like to concrete this little swell right there by the pavilion. Put bollards along Destroyer to restrict the vehicular traffic so that people won't drive off into our nice grass. Put some decorative lighting along Destroyer. This would be both for safety and to make it look nice. So inside, that whole fenced-in area, so kind of in the back of the pavilion, if you will, that old parking area, you know, it's pretty rough. You know, Jim suggests we rip that up and then redo it. Also, outside, along Simmons, this is relatively minor, but if we increase the street lighting along Simmons for safety, it'd be somewhere, we just say, hey, energy puts more lighting, we'll pay for it through hot funds. Then also, another project I'd like to do, but again, it would enhance the Riverside Pavilion, is the ball field that's right across the street there at Simmons from the pavilion, to convert that into a parking lot. And yes, we are still in communication with the church that owns those two little, if you will, the southwest corner, they own two small lots. Not sure if we're going to get that from them or not, but those are things that we think are eligible. And I say we think they, that are eligible to use, spend hot funds on there. We don't have any numbers at this time, unless Jim's done multiple things on me that I didn't realize. But, but those are the improvements that we're looking at. And I guess, coming out of this, what we're kind of looking for is like, go forth and do these things and bring them back and get them approved. But also, in general, throughout the city, as time goes by, want to spend some of these hot funds on signage that would direct tourists to these different sites and attractions throughout the city. That is an eligible fund, eligible category. And also, one of the things I'd like y'all to consider as we move through the budget process, so one of the things that we want to do for our CVB in this coming budget is to increase the amount that they receive from hot funds for logistical support of the city events, meaning increased security. And again, to be able to reimburse our park staffs, our street staffs, because again, all of those different, so police, streets, parks, you know, as we have things like the July Fourth, and as those get better and better, you know, somebody has to go out there and clean the restrooms, open the restrooms, put out barricades, man, again, pay our police officers to go out there and provide security. You know, in today's crazy world, we'd rather have a couple extra police officers out there and then not. So again, don't need any action from that, that, if you will, that line today, but that will be in the budget moving forward. So if you say, why are we increasing it there? Because we're trying to improve the city support of the city events. Now, also, as we move through. Now, also, as we move through, we try to identify better for when, for example, crude onyx is doing something and all these different events, say, here's how much it costs to the city. You need to, um, be prepared to, you know, reimburse the city for those things. And that's things that they could work into their application for these different grants. But again, with that and, with, with all those things in mind, you know, we'd like to move forward with that. But I'd like to ask you if you have any, uh, any other ideas or, or, uh, any of the CVB staff. But keep in mind, so I, so I can keep everything legal, uh, any other ideas we have must directly enhance and promote tourism in the convention and hotel industry and fit into one of those nine categories of which I provided y'all in the packet. So, again, just wanna have a little conversation and, uh, see what y'all's thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I think that that's wonderful. Um, I do wanna jump out ahead on this one because I know we've talked about it before and I love all of this. I think that's definitely what we need if we're talking about it, um, before we get into the fiscal budget and if we're gonna use some of those hot funds. I would like to talk to the council if we need to have a special call meeting. One thing that I think that needs to be added to the Riverside Pavilion is a play area for children. That's why, that while concerts are taking place, you know, you have little ones that don't always wanna sit still. If you had a play area maybe to the east of the Riverside Pavilion where it's still well-lit and the kids can play, that's something that I would like to look into. If you're facing the stage, it would be to your left, um, in that area. Or it just somewhere in that vicinity, I think that that would be, um,
I agree.
A, a supportive part of that whole experience. Like, here we are watching the concert, I'm, I'm having a good time and my kids are right there where I can see them playing and we're enjoying the whole experience. But I, I also agree with everything else, I think that'd be a good, good shot.
I have something. If there's a playground or something put out there, could a, like a water fountain or something be put out there for the children?
Mm-hmm.
In that area, you know?
Sure, sure.
That's it?
No. That's it.
No, I, nobody got nothing else?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you, Mr. Coons. And we're not voting on it, but I, I think you have the full support of the council on that.
Okay.
I like that.
We can't vote on it, but I'm pretty sure if.
Well, again, some of those are, are gonna be things that we bring to you.
Over time.
And so when you see, hey, why are you doing this? Like, well, remember back in June when we talked about?
Yes, sir.
This is how we're going to do that.
Okay. And when I talk, when I say a park, I don't mean Lions Den level park, you know? I mean, something like what we saw like in Bridgemont, in the Bridgemont Park, or maybe even in the, um, what's the area behind the Horseman Store? What do we call that again?
Brownwood.
Brownwood, something of, of that nature. Okay? Okay, thank you. We will move on to item nine A. Consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Potty Woods Ascendation Incorporated, two thousand four, Dupont Drive, Orange, Texas, seven, seven, six, three, zero, in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand. First reading was May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Trahan?
So this is the final action step in terms of actually executing the EDC agreement. So basically, it's just a public action steps up to your approval and then we report back to, uh, Mike Wilson, the project manager, and then we'll be able to execute.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Item nine B, consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with J. Bro Enterprises LLC, eighteen oh seven West Georgia Switch Gloria. Switch Road, Karen Pearl, Louisiana, seven, zero, five, two, zero, in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand. The reserve at Madder Lakes slash Alley Payne Road. Mr. Trahan?
So this is a follow-up to this morning's EDC meeting. As part of the public approval process, a, a motion has to be approved by the EDC and then it pushes toward you as a council in terms of a first reading and a final reading, which will take place in two weeks. So, again, just a public action step. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Trahan?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion from Mr. Bailey, a second from Ms. Henigan, Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Item nine C, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number three with NNT construction for the City of Orange Recreation Center. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir, this is to, um, basically correct a safety issue that we believe could be an issue. Basketball go as soon as you enter the door is rather close to the front doors and there's a wall separating it. But above that, there is nothing. So this is where our mesh would continue on to keep the balls from hitting people checking in.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna. You're helping us keep from getting sued by somebody.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'll make a motion on this one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Alright. Motion. I can see the volleyball games taking shots. Alright, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Item nine D, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number four with NNT construction for the City of Orange Recreation Center. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, uh, Mayor, Council. This is for continuing the handrail instead of just in the front of the bleachers. It goes down the side where the people would be checking in and behind where the stairs are. So another safety issue that we're trying to address now.
Alright, thank you, sir. Okay, do we have any comments or questions?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Okay, on to item nine E. Consider a resolution of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, selecting an engineer to assist the city in its application and implementation of funding from the U.S. Department of Treasury for the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one for RFQ two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Engineering services in connection with the rehabilitation of Jackson Waste Water Treatment Plant and other possible projects funded by the American Rescue Plan Act slash ARPA funds. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. We recently went out for RFQs to local area engineers. We had a terrific response. We had at least four that responded and they're all highly qualified in their, in their specialty items. We wanted to and we are allowed to approve all of them as far as being qualified to work on future ARPA-funded projects. So our recommendation is to, uh, qualify all four of these consultants. And, uh, once the work develops and unfolds, we'll make a, we'll come back to council with our recommendation in the particular area or the unit within the wastewater treatment plant that we'd like to use a particular firm.
Okay.
Yes, sir. But you got four qualified, huh? Yes, sir, we have four that are qualified. Outstanding.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. On to item ten. Consider a motion approving action taken by the EDC concerning an Eagle Point Parkway Phase One project budget increase in an amount not to exceed five thousand for construction materials testing as recommended by project engineer Don King with Fitz and Shipman. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, sir, so Mayor and Council, this is a follow-up again to this morning's EDC meeting. Uh, basically, the request was submitted by the engineer of record, Don King. However, there is an inspector on site representing the engineering firm and this just helps move the project forward. So subject to your approval, we'll go ahead and, uh, continue to move this project forward.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Item ten B, consider a motion approving a project timeline extension through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two for Alco LTD concerning Eagle Point Parkway Phase One due to work change orders, rain days, and coordination efforts with Tech Doc. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, sir, so, um, a, a project of this magnitude gets complex at times and whenever you have so many moving parts involved, sometimes you don't always meet your project completion timeline for the various reasons that were discussed. So I, I, I have an optimistic feeling that we could potentially complete the project before this new date, but just to give us adequate time in discussing with Mr. Wolf as well as Don King and, uh, the project owner, it would probably be wise for us to extend it out and we would just amend the agreement. So that's what our recommendation is.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Trahan?
The only comment I'd make is I'd like to know what rain, rain days they're talking about.
Well, I don't have the specific dates, but, uh, believe it or not, at one point in time, we did get a few drops.
We had very few.
I know we average sixty inches a year, I think, and, uh, I think we were either eleven or twelve inches below our annual rainfall. But the next time we schedule a CVB event, trust me, we'll probably get rains.
Or, if you wanted to rain, call the Lions Club. Soon as Lions Club sets up.
That's a deal. Terry, Terry Salter can make that happen.
Yeah, monsoon season. Alrighty.
You didn't hit that starting.
Okay. Okay, do we have any other questions or comments for Mr. Trahan? Okay, if not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Okay, on to item ten C. Consider a motion approving action taken by the EDC concerning an additional one hundred linear foot water line extension for Orange City Donut, Mr. Horn C, thirty-six forty MLK Drive, Orange, Texas, seven, seven, six, three, two, in an amount not to exceed eight thousand for the purpose of economic development. The total EDC incentive for the project is an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand dollars. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, sir, so Mayor and Council, anytime you're working these projects, there's always going to be contingencies. In this case, um, when we looked at the existing water line, there were two options that were to be considered. Number one, the more complex one would be to bore under MLK and bring it in from the Hillbrook Estates area, which would have been more timely and, and more costly. Or the other option that we looked at, working with Jim Wolfe and the Public Works Department, is to tap at the northwest corner of the apartment complex that's on Sykes Road. So basically, that was discussed whenever the plumber, um, basically mobilized on site. Um, the discussion then revolved around, uh, the extension point from the apartment complex to get it to the project site. So this is what we have. Originally, you as a council approved action by the EDC in the form of thirty-five thousand dollar EDC incentive at the beginning of the project. Then we discussed the water line, which resulted in an additional ten thousand. And once the contractor mobilized, uh, then the discussion basically went to the extension from the existing point to get it to the project site. So now, with the eight thousand dollar expenditure, this covers that contingency. Total EDC incentive, fifty-three thousand, and we get water to the site. So the EDC formally approved it, now it pivots to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions, sir, that you may have.
Okay, any other questions?
Make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. And on to item ten B. Consider a po- a motion reappointing Dr. Suzanne Crockett to the Orange Con- to the Orange Convention and Visitors Bureau CVB Advisory Board for an additional two-year term with specified dates of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two through June, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Downs?
Hello, Mayor and Council. So Dr. Crockett has graciously asked to continue her service with the CVB Advisory Board. Um, she's served in the past and she's been a great asset and very supportive of everything that we bring to the city of Orange. And we would like you to consider allowing her to be reappointed.
Oh, definitely. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second and a third. Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item ten.
That's you again.
We got you one more time. Item ten E. Consider a motion approving the appointment of Matthew Chandler to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board for a two-year term with effective dates of June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two through June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Downs?
Okay, so Mr. Chandler is, would be new to the CVB Advisory Board. Um, he recently has been appointed on the EDC board. We're very excited that he is looking to get involved in different facets of the city of Orange. And so we recommend, uh, or we ask that you consider approving him for the CVB Advisory Board.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Byrds?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Ms. Dowdles. Welcome to the team again. Very happy that you moved into Orange and now you get a chance to utilize your talents. We appreciate it. Okay, on item ten F, consider a motion rejecting the bid for the ARPA project number 2022-26 West Beagle Road Lift Station and Forest Main Upgrade, Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, we had one bid come in and it was way outside of our budget and so we just decided to rebid it. I mean, knock this one down or asking for y'all to reject it so that we can re-advertise with hope to attract more vendors so they can get a better competitive bid.
Okay.
I have a question, what was their bid?
490.
490,000?
So what are we going to be doing for a lift station in the meantime? Is there a lift station that's actually working?
The lift station is working, we have a bypass pump that we built at the city and it is installed.
That's the one that has the backup pump sitting on it?
Yes, sir. So we're able to keep it in operation and handling the flow, but we are causing a little bit of an issue there because we're pressurizing Forest Main, which is not good to do. But it's going to hold out until we get this done. It's just worth throwing a little additional money and wear on the pump as a bypass.
I'll make a motion.
Ah, no, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Ingram. Okay, item ten G, discussion regarding ongoing public works projects, ARPA projects, and HGMP projects, Mr. Wolf.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. A few weeks or several months back, we did a somewhat of a PowerPoint presentation where we gave you a broad brush overview of our ARPA-funded projects. Today, what I'd like to do is, once again, broad brush, I won't, I won't take each project individually unless you do have a question. I'll try to groove it so it will move the program along. We have about 40 projects right now that are listed in these three revenue funds. We separated by public works projects. These are projects that are ongoing, most are near completion actually, and they're funded by general fund money. We have a second group that we refer to as the ARPA projects. They're funded by federally funded money, or federally provided money. We call it ARPA 2021 Round One. If you recall, about a year ago, we got our first $4 million and now we're expecting our second $4 million. So we have, we will totally have 8 million to work with in round one plus when we receive round two money.
And if I may, we did, we did receive that already.
Okay, good.
So cha-ching.
And then the third group that we're going after, our deadline is the end of this month and they refer to it as the HMGP or the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And so we have projects and we're going after 5 million under that revenue fund. So I'll start with the public works projects. We have probably around, we show 10 listed. At the top of the list is our Recreation Center and we hope to have that completed during, sometime during the month of August. The contractor is at the stage now where he's bringing in the HVAC finalization, humidity adjustments, and he'll be able to install the floor. It takes a special, you know, conditions for them to go forward with the installation of the floor and we have been delayed by CenterPoint Energy setting a gas meter. But they promised us yesterday they'd set that gas meter today for us, so we hope that moves forward. We have our West Side Water Line, Phase One, it's at completion. They're turning a valve today to tie it into the rest of our system, so we're real proud about that. Phase Two of West Side Water is, will be an ARPA-funded project. Cooper's Gully Concrete Linings, we just completed that project. We're doing some cleaning up on it, we're going to do some additional cleaning of the previously poured concrete. We had some money left over in the Phase Two, so I'll authorize them to, let's go back and clean everything out real good. We're working on Phase Three, we have about $3 million to spend on Phase Three. Eagle Point Roadway is near completion, as Jay made reference to. We hope within a month or less, we have that project completed. The last bit of work there with Italians that, along the Frontage Road, the eastbound Frontage Road at the north end of the site. Sunset Water Line, we've pushed that back, we've got that on hold, we're hoping to be able to fund that in the new budget year. RFQ on the City Hall, Old City Hall, that was Don LaBeach's presentation. We have a cave-in on Burton Street that we're working on, we hope to have that completed very, very soon. We have, we worked on blowers in our wastewater treatment plant and that is either at completion or near completion. Our tennis courts are going to be resurfaced during the month of August. So we're proud of that. Brownwood Playground, that should finish up during the month of August. New playground at Brownwood. So those are, those are 10, the first 10 projects right there. We have items 11, 12, deal with our wastewater, part of our wastewater system. Leith and Burton is a lift station and item number 12, a clarifier, that's at our, we were able to bring that in and get that funded under ARPA. It originally was under general fund. We're working on a kiosk at the Cove Recreation Center and we're finishing up our Quiet Zone, Union Pacific Railroad. We're having some local traffic signs installed permanently next week. And once they, once we do that and then the railroad gives us an inspection, we can go out for a notice of, NOE, they call it, Notice of Establishment. And it takes about six to eight weeks after that and then we should have a Quiet Zone, finally, all the way across the interstate. The next group is ARPA 2021 Round One funded projects, I'll do it in groups. Items, contract numbers one, two, and three on your spreadsheet deals with water, deals with our water distribution system. Item four is a stormwater project, Greenway Park, we're fixing to advertise and bid that project. Items five through eight are lit, deal with lift stations, sanitary sewer lift stations. And the total cost is estimated over there on the right-hand side of the spreadsheet. After that, we have, we're dealing on, the next sheet, we're dealing at the wastewater treatment plant, items 10 through 14. Items 15 through 19 are various locations where we are planning to do sewer repair work in round two, ARPA-funded money, round two. You see, our totals for the first 10 items is 4.5 million. That's our estimated total cost for items one through 10. So we're, we're kind of tethering ourselves back, approaching an estimate, putting together estimates for this round two ARPA. The third group of projects is what we refer to as our Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We have seven projects listed. We presented these to council here a couple of months back. As a refresher, items one through four, which equate to about $3.5 million, deal with stormwater, stormwater. Items five, six, and seven deal with emergency standby power, emergency generators. And the total of that is the $5 million for Hazard Mitigation Grant. We probably have 10 other projects that are not listed here that really are in the infancy stages because of challenges of growth. We're working with Chevron CP Chem on providing water and sewer, hopefully to that site. We've entered into discussions with them. They act very interested that they want to deal with us to provide water sewer to that site. So there are some challenges to do that, but we're hopeful to overcome that. So are there any questions?
That would be outstanding.
Be great.
No question.
I don't have a question, I just want to say, I don't really even have the words to say or express how much I appreciate you, Mr. Wolf. Your work speaks volumes for what you've done for this community. I know that we may not have you much longer, it's almost time to retire, but if there was, if there was a million words that I could put together to honor you and say thank you, to be a part of this council, I've been here eight years, going on nine years, and to see us go from where we have been and now you're working on $13 million in projects that are addressing all the things that we've been tagged about and talked bad about, and I know you see it a little bit too, but to be able to work on those and to see them come forth, I'd just say thank you because like, what is better than an answered prayer? To be able to make your customers happy and let them see that you're working. So I honor you, I respect you, and I say thank you for all that you're doing.
Well, thank you, it's been a real honor to serve the citizens of Orange and the various councils that we've, we've been able to interface with. I've been here 23 years and it's been a real pleasure.
Yes, sir.
So I enjoy it and I leave with a heavy heart.
Yes, sir. Well, we know it's not over just yet, we're going to bring you back in for another meeting, but.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I just wanted to tell you that, man, like honestly, seriously, thank you.
Yes.
We're going to put a statue in front of City Hall with Mr. Wolf. Pointing away like. And this isn't, this isn't his last meeting, we're not going to just let him go away like that. And I just, it just touches my heart because, like so many of you understand, and I've told you before and I'll tell you again as long as I'm sitting in this seat, this isn't something that we just sit up here and do for fun or to be able to go to a Christmas party and say, hey, we're mayor and council. We want to work and serve the community. And when you have staff members and team members and everybody that's joining in to make the city better, what more can you ask for? And to have a gentleman that has done as much as Mr. Wolf has done to bring Orange to where it is today. A lot of times you see the rec center or the Lions Den Park, or you may see things happening like Chick-fil-A and Starbucks, but what you don't see is the 2:00 AM getting called because of sewer line collapse. What you don't see is the new pumps for the sewer stations and the lift stations that have to be fixed where these gentlemen are out there in the mosquitoes in the middle of the night getting work done, but also securing the possibility of infrastructure. Like, we're able to grow because this gentleman has made it to where we're able to do that. That doesn't come from a mayor and council, sorry, Mike, that don't come from a city manager. Someone's got to lay the foundation that makes a city able to grow and you've done that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I always get emotional too, and then to see him get emotional, man, it took me there, so. It's a good man right there. Okay, let me give that to my sponsor. All right, city manager report, Mr. Coons.
Uh, Mayor, Council, just reminder to everybody, because of the Juneteenth, the city hall, it will be a city holiday on Monday, June the 20th, and also today is June the 14th, so besides being Flag Day, today is the Army's birthday. So hooah, that's all I have.
Awesome. Okay, city council report, starting with Mr. Burge?
Nothing to report.
I have no report.
No report, Ms. McKenna?
Oh, so excited about Juneteenth celebration. I've attended it in the past, I have watched it grow, I mean, I just can't wait to see all the growth that's going to happen this time, so let's go out there.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Salter?
Yes, please go out there. And I also want to take the time to thank all the people that came out this weekend to the Hollywood Community Cemetery. That came and donated things, gave their time, Paul worked really hard, him and Ramon and so many people in the community came out and helped. So thank you so much and God bless.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
I've got a couple of things. One, Mr. Wolf, council slept better at night because of you. During Harvey, when Beaumont lost their water pressure, had to close their hospitals, you had the City of Orange up and running. Bar none, the best service ever, thank you, sir, we're going to miss you. Number two, there's a gentleman that lives over by American Fence, his name's Bob Bennett. I get constant emails about caustic burning across the freeway, I think around the inner island. I have not forwarded y'all all the emails because they hit me at 10:30 at night, wanted me to go out there and check on it. So maybe the fire department could check on the burning in that area. I think you're aware of it, Chief Bilbo. The third item, I would like to request that possibly the City of Orange could put a hurricane fence around the seventh electrical enclosures out at the baseball field. That was a very dangerous situation over the Easter holidays when they were vandalized. I understand the thief that was stealing the copper probably flew 20 feet when he hit the, that floor out wire, trying to cut it loose. And I think maybe we would have something reserved where we could just go wrap that little pavilion that those enclosures are in. And maybe a lock gate on it. That's all I have.
Okay.
That's a good suggestion, I bet he thought twice about it and when he flew.
I have a witness that said he went 20 feet.
Wow, wow.
Mr. Bailey?
Well, to follow up with Brad, Mr. Wolf, goes without saying, you're going to be sorely missed. I've had the pleasure of being here for over a year now, a little over a year, but I knew what you did, pardon me, coming here. So I tip my hat to you. And the water line has been put in down by Tulane, they have finished it up, as you said, and they did clean it up quite nicely. So, good job. That's, that's all.
All right, so I want to thank everybody that came today, everybody that spoke. I do want to thank her, even though she's probably going to kill me, but Ms. Lane from the Orange County EDC is here in support. Thank you so much for being here. Once again, to our new fire chief, Bilbo, congratulations once again to all of the wonderful updates we had, Mr. Chandler. Thank you for being here. Real quick, I'll tell this very quick story about Mr. Wolf and it's just to let you understand how much he means to me and how much it matters. So Hurricane Laura was my, please, Jesus, let her be my only hurricane. My first hurricane as mayor and hopefully my last hurricane as mayor. And, you know, even, I had Mike, I love you, Mike, you know, you're my boy, but we had everybody in the room and everybody's figuring out what to do and it's like, in that moment, I looked over at Mr. Wolf and I was like, Mr. Wolf, is this building going to make it? What do we need to do? And he was like, we need to roll out, there's no doubt, there's no second guessing. Like, my confidence and trust in him was like, this is the guy. If he says we need to roll out to another building?
We're out of here.
We were gone in 30 seconds. But it just, and I know I probably never told you that, but in that moment, even though I'm the mayor and I have to make all these decisions, your voice meant a ton. And no lives were lost in the entire city or on staff, and what more can you ask for us? Right? So God bless you, sir, and thank you. With that being said, we will now adjourn to close executive session. Deliberation regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Deliberation regarding real estate development projects is authorized by section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. Deliberation with city attorney pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Consultation with attorney regarding the installation of solar panels in the historic district and section 551.074, personnel matters regarding the retirement of public works director, Mr. Jim Wolf. At this time, you are able to vacate the premises, I do not recommend standing outside, the library has AC. So hang out in the library and we'll reconvene when we're finished, thank you. Did you go to school, was you going to the beach?
Yeah, Christopher's sick right now.
Oh, man, it's so hot right now. It's one time, I even have a good time. It's so hot right now.
Oh, don't want to.
You get to hear the water and whoosh, it's like, it's like rain right now. Okay, cheeseburger, okay, here we go. Reconvene in open session, take action as necessary regarding items 12A1, 12B1, and 12B2. The action that was taken can, is for 12B1 with the, we had an update from staff and our lawyers concerning the solar panels and city council is requesting for staff to continue to look into it for updates from legislation on how we can move forward. And there is no other action to be taken, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.